I'd like to call this meeting of Boulder City City Council to order with appropriate apology right off the bat. We... Now. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Boulder City City Council. We have an apology to start off with. We do not have a live stream opportunity today for situations that are not under our control. Those who are going to do public comment will be those who are present. What I would suggest you do with your, what we call your devices, is you message all your friends and say if you want to have public comment, get here while we're still doing it, and maybe that will work more effectively than us trying to get it going otherwise. So there will be no live streaming of this meeting, but it will be recorded, and it will be on Boulder City TV, BCTV tomorrow on demand whenever a person would like to see it. The items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. Having called it to order, we will have confirmation of the posting and the roll call by the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and we have member Matt Fox absent from the meeting.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We'll now have the invocation by Pastor Kurt Hedlund from Brethany Baptist Church. All rise, please.
Let's pray. "Blessed are you, O Lord our God, King of the universe. Most of us in this community trace some kind of spiritual heritage to the Christian faith, and as such, we have a spiritual debt of gratitude to the children of Abraham. So we are unhappy that antisemitism rears its head in this town. We're glad that we have citizens who are sensitive to it and recognize it as not being appropriate. We're thankful, Heavenly Father, for the many volunteer organizations that we have in this community, and we thank today especially of Lendehan. We're thankful for the good work that they have done, especially for our seniors and those who are handicapped. We pray that you would continue to bless them, give them volunteers, give them great leadership, provide the funding that they need to accomplish their mission. We're thankful for all the people who work for this city, and fire, and police, and other city employees. We pray that you would give them strong consciences, that they would be men and women of integrity, and continue to be a blessing to this town. Guide the meeting tonight, give these city council members wisdom, pray that things that need to be argued through would be done in a spirit of civility. Give these members wisdom. Pray in Jesus' name, amen."
If you may remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Madam City Clerk, any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the council meeting for public comment, and the public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters on the agenda for action. Each member has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. Those who would wish may come forward and state your name and tell us your thoughts.
Bob Sweeten with Rev Renewables. I just wanted to make sure, we're here for our agenda item 13. We planned initially just to kind of wait until that item, and then, to the extent the council will hear from the bidders, to the extent they want to allow that, we would speak then. I just wanted to confirm that'll be the case. I didn't want to waive a comment opportunity.
If you would like to say something, please do it now.
Okay, no problem. Let me grab my... Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Bob Sweeten here for Rev Renewables. You have before you tonight agenda item 13, the consideration of the grant of an RFP and a recommendation from the city council. We were able to provide earlier through the help of city staff, a letter to the council that we'd ask you to consider tonight. What we are asking for, Rev Renewables Delamar, we're asking for the council to defer any action tonight so that the bidders and the city staff can work together to review and respond to some of the issues that were brought up in the city evaluation memo. The RFPs were submitted, and this is, so council, as you are aware, this is a relatively new process on the battery energy storage systems. It was kind of adapted from, my understanding, the process that we used before for solar projects. And the RFP, you know, the bids were submitted, the staff reviewed it. As we have gone through and done our review, our concern is that some of the metrics that were used were much more qualitative than quantitative. Specifically, there functionally was no quantitative analysis done or provided to the parties about which of these systems would provide the best deal for Boulder City and the residents of the city in the long term. Rev Renewables has been working on this project for a long time. As the council may recall, I was here along with Mr. Nathan Murdock, who can answer any technical questions on the project about a year ago, roughly. And when we came, we discussed, you know, the interest that we had. At the time, we were looking at doing a joint venture with UNLV, and that didn't end up playing out. Well, we have the bid here tonight. Some of the things that we want the council to be aware of that weren't necessarily considered is primarily, I think the strongest point, is that Rev Renewables is the only applicant, only RFP responder that put in, that currently has what's called a large generation interconnection agreement, an LGIA with SoCal Edison. Those agreements are absolutely indisputably necessary in order to have a project like this move forward, and currently, they do those without getting too boring and too into the weeds on this. It's what I do for a living, but it's not for everybody. They do what's called a cluster study. Those take years to do. Right now, the lead time on getting an LGIA, a large generation interconnection agreement in place, is between five and seven years. Rev Renewables is the only party that currently has one in place. And I think one of the issues concerning to us, and staff did a great job of reviewing all the proposals, but one thing that was concerning to us is when it went through the pros and lists con, that was not a pro that was listed in our category. Further, there was, I think, some, there was a little bit of a lack of clarity in the RFP that we think can be tightened up, and the bidders can provide more useful information. When we get into a quantitative analysis, you're able to do a much more apples-to-apples approach instead of, or qualitative analysis, I'm sorry, quantitative. When you do a qualitative analysis, it's not really an apples-to-apples approach. It's just, hey, this is what we'll pay in rent, this is what a project's going to look like, and that can all look very nice until the numbers are really thoroughly reviewed. What we are asking council to do tonight on this is one of two things. To either send this back for a second round of supplemental information from the bidders, we would submit, that is allowed under the RFP. The RFP actually says that the city holds the ability to modify, supplement, do all of that type of stuff, or alternatively, just go through a new bid process to start from zero, where some of these more quantitative issues can be more thoroughly vetted, they can be provided by the parties. I'll note, there were several things, and I don't want to belabor the point, but there were several issues that either pros or cons were a bit confusing. In one instance, specifically related to water usage, it would appear from the city bid evaluation, we were marked down or given downward departure because of the water requirements that we submitted relative to dust control, which is required by the county. There's not much you can do on that front, whereas other parties who put no water requirement in or nothing about dust control, it appears that they received beneficial treatment, that they were going to be using less water. There are some others related to easements and potential projects running through the major Boulder City conservation easement that aren't issues for us. But again, and so, we think that more time will not harm anybody with how long these projects take to...
Speaking of more time, you're out of time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I will finish with that. I just want to say that we don't believe that this will harm the city or any of its residents or any of the bidders by taking some more time to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeten. On the regular agenda, having finished, is there anyone else for public comment? We'll move to the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
I have public comments to read, written public comments.
Okay, please do it this time.
Mayor, this written comment was submitted by Judith Hoskins. Mayor and city council members, thank you for listening to my remarks on item 11, matters pertaining to monuments, memorials on city-owned property. I am the wife of a veteran, and several family members were veterans. I am retired from the Department of Defense and have worked with and know many veterans. I have also volunteered for many veterans' organizations and have great respect for all veterans. Therefore, I feel I must make my thoughts known on monuments honoring veterans. Any monument honoring veterans should be placed in an area where it can be memorialized by all and be part of memorializing other veterans who have dedicated their lives to the service of our country. Shane Patton was a great and courageous individual. My family has attended the block parties and contributed to this monument. I should not be, it should not be placed in Wilbur Park. We should properly respect Shane and place his monument in Veterans Memorial Park. It would be great if it could be at the entrance of the park. Placing this monument in Wilbur Park is disrespectful to Shane. Due to a large number of trees in Wilbur Park, we have many birds which will apply their droppings on this monument, thus causing marks and discoloration. Who is going to keep the monument clean? Due to the size of the monument, it will be difficult. The large amount of dogs that frequent the park will be marking the monument at least three times per dog, disrespecting this monument. I make these remarks out of respect for Shane. I hope the council will realize that voting for Wilbur Park is disrespectful to Shane and his ultimate sacrifice. I ask the mayor and each council member to rethink the proposal and come back with a proposal that is appropriate to honor of a veteran of the United States of America. The next public comment was submitted by Charm McElroy. My name is Charm McElroy, and I've been a resident of Boulder City for nine years in March. Since retiring here, I have continued to be involved with the national program called Operation Recognition. This is a program that awards veterans of World War II, Korean conflict, and the Vietnam Wars their high school diplomas if they left for war before graduating high school. I was first introduced to this program through the San Bernardino School District and working as coordinator of the Victor Valley Adult School. Since moving to Boulder City, I have been working as a volunteer with the Nevada Department of Veterans Services to continue this very rewarding program. I have graduated 60 veterans, two of which are Boulder City residents. My purpose for mentioning this is that for the past 13 years, my life has been and will continue to be very much involved with the veterans. My understanding is that there is a proposal for a rather large statue of Shane Patton to be placed in Wilbur Park instead of the Veterans Memorial Park. I believe it will be discussed tonight on item 11, monuments, memorials on city-owned property. I want it to go down in writing that I feel it would be a complete dishonor and disgrace to have his statue put in a city park. Shane gave his life in the military for the United States, and Veterans Memorial Park is where he should be honored for the service to his country. I've supported the fundraiser for Shane and will continue to do so if I know that those monies are appropriately used for Shane in some way that affords him the honor for which he deserves. I feel all veterans deserve to be honored in a memorial park, not in a city park. I would appreciate... This is for me, I apologize. That's the end of that public comment. Next public comment was submitted by Blair Davenport. Regarding agenda item number 11A, discussion in designating a city-owned park as a location to place the Shane Patton Memorial. The current version of the Shane Patton Memorial is well-designed, and the story behind it deserves a location that appropriately honors the fallen. Such a location should be where veterans, comrades, families, friends, and the public come to respectfully gather, reflect, remember, and honor our heroes. There are currently three locations in Boulder City dedicated to such honors and memorialization: the state Southern Nevada Veteran Cemetery, the city's Veterans Memorial Park, and Veterans Memorial Drive. The Shane Patton Memorial deserves to be located in one of those three honorific locations. Wilbur Square is not an appropriate location for the Shane Patton Memorial or similar memorials since the park is primarily used for recreation and relaxation, dog walking, and large special and entertainment events. Such activities are in direct conflict with the memorialization of our fallen. Regarding agenda item 11B, discussion to implement a public monument policy. The current draft of the public monument policy does not address comments provided by the Historic Preservation Committee or suggestions I provided. City Community Development Director Mays on June 29, 2022. In part, I suggest the policy should, one, include language that pertains to historic districts and include reviews by the Historic Preservation Commission and/or Historic Preservation Officer; two, reference how cemeteries are included or exempt from the policy; three, include specific procedures for veteran monuments and memorials. Perhaps a subcommittee with the Parks and Rec Commission could be created to help establish such a policy, and include members from the local state veterans' facilities, local veterans' groups, American Legion, VFW, and other interested citizens. A map or guide to veteran monuments, memorials could also be added to the city's website. Thank you for considering my comments. Next written public comment was submitted by Judy DeShane. Item number 11, private monuments on public lands. This should be a no vote for the Shane Patton Monument to be placed in the center of Wilbur Park. It is a public land owned by all citizens, and upkeep of public lands is paid for by all citizens through tax dollars. I don't recall ever hearing of a citizen vote to allow officials, elected or appointed, given permission by voters, to give away public land for permanent or semi-permanent use to a specific group. This monument is less than citywide significance, Rule 6, page 321 of Staff Report. The only thing I have seen in that, he was a resident and graduate of Boulder City Schools who joined the military and was killed in action. These facts do not make his accomplishments or him above or more significant than many other young Boulder City men and women who served or are currently serving. Evaluations: I don't believe this monument passes this test, as I don't see where this would weather the vagaries of time and changing attitudes. People opposed to everything are damaging statues to Lincoln and Washington. Can you really say this is going to be more important than that statue? What contribution to the community did Mr. Patton make? Being killed is very sad and heartbreaking to those who knew and loved him, but not a contribution to the community. It is not compatible with any monument or statue I am aware of in any place in the city. I believe back in April, it was stated that the monument would be approximately 13 feet tall and requires 330 square feet of space, and those proposing the monument commented that they would only accept it being placed in the middle of Wilbur Park, and they would retain ownership. It would not belong to the city. This will require ongoing maintenance to wash up bird droppings and hose off daily doggy pit stops at its base. We can get people to pick up their, we can't get people to pick up their dog droppings. Do you really think people are going to keep their dogs from using the base area as a urinal? I am strongly against giving away public land for private purposes. Public land is maintained by everybody's tax dollars, rich and poor alike. Therefore, it should never be given away without the vote of all citizens. Elected or appointed officials should never be able to have citizens or groups hold sway over them for pet projects. All of us are subject to our own opinions and our vision of fair, but that does not make elected or appointed officials right in their actions. The current rules as published in the Staff Report are extremely open-ended and subject to a lot of bias, which will not help the community. We have all read or heard news reports of many things we know being now a big no-no by one group of people or another. Giving your blessing to this huge monument to be placed in the middle of our little city is asking for future problems. Staff needs to go back to the drawing board on their draft of rules. Too much is missing. Judy DeShane. And that's the end of my written public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And if you could look at the approval of the regular agenda, do you have any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney, any changes?
No changes.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, do you have any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would request removal of item 11. We are working through some proposed changes to the original proposal from the Shane Patton Foundation and would like to iron those out, and then I'll bring it back as soon as possible to another council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item number 11 will be removed from this agenda to be brought back later unless there are objections. Thank you. For, also, we're looking at approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk...
Mr. Mayor, we need a formal vote on the approval of the regular agenda with the change.
Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda with the change?
I move to approve the regular agenda with the removal of item number 11.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, that has passed. Then we're on to the approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
And anyone on the council want to have anything removed from the consent agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
None, and I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, the consent agenda was approved. We'll move to the regular agenda. Item number seven on the agenda, which is a presentation by the city manager, Taylor Tetter, on the updated status of the 2025 strategic plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Every quarter, we update you and the community on the city's strategic plan and its implementation plan. The plan came about in 2018 with the help of Management Partners, an organization with more than 25 years in government consulting. The city issued two different surveys, one for residents and one for employees. Staff engaged with the public in four workshops, and two council workshops were also held to develop the strategic plan, and one staff workshop set forth strategies to meet the goals. The plan is on track to be completed this year, well ahead of the deadline of June of 2024. So we've closed out three of the five goals. Achieve prudent financial stewardship, which features 10 strategies. Invest in infrastructure, which has five strategies. And manage growth and development with 11 strategies. We have about 5% left of promote historic preservation, and 3% remaining of sustain a high level of public safety services. So achieve prudent financial stewardship. There are two strategies that are left to finish. First strategy two, diversify revenue sources through greater use of grants, self-sustaining funds, and leases. The city did enter into a lease for Silver Peak Solar Phase 1, and then recently amended the option agreements for Silver Peak Solar, Boulder Solar 3 with an increase to the option payment to be consistent with the others, and Boulder Flat Solar. And then we also have item 13 on tonight's agenda would also be one of those if it does go through. So the next item is invest in infrastructure. All the items are complete and are continued to be addressed. So strategy two, maximize the use of outside funding sources for infrastructure. Engineering staff has continued to work on water service replacement projects, which are reimbursed through our ARPA funds. Staff has also secured additional funding from the Regional Transportation Commission to construct shade structures along the newly renovated Boulder City Parkway corridor, which was just approved on the consent agenda this evening. Manage growth and development. This goal has one strategy left to complete, and that's strategy eight, which is create development standards for business corridors to help acknowledge the city's history. The Historic Preservation Committee is currently reviewing updates to the existing design guidelines, including the downtown area. For strategy seven, staff continues to work with the Regional Transportation Commission to receive funding for ADA and pedestrian safety upgrades. And Public Works has selected a consultant for the Boulder City Parkway Phase 2 project, which complete streets, projects promote improved connectivity. Under promote historic preservation, we have four strategies that are still open but very close to completion. For strategy four, amend existing codes to achieve historic preservation goals, the city council adopted the amended historic preservation ordinance on October 11, 2022. And in strategy eight, identify historic buildings to repurpose and reuse as appropriate for a given area. The state Historic Preservation Office did send the city a draft commission for cultural centers and historic preservation agreement, which will be presented to the city council early this year for consideration. Goal five is sustain a high level of public safety services. We do have one strategy left to complete on the plan from this, which is number five. Identify and embrace the latest technology to improve effectiveness and efficiency of public safety services. Strategy six, communicate and celebrate the low crime rate and other service excellence. So BCTV goes viral with hashtag bad drivers. We've reached thousands of social media users with the catchy hashtags, and these posts do serve as a reminder that you should buckle up, watch your speed, and don't drive under the influence. And we actually had a media request today regarding this, so it's definitely catching on out there. And then the fire department successfully completed their accreditation peer team visit. The department received recommendation for accreditation, and I'll be joining the department to sit before the Commission for Fire Accreditation in March of 2023, and there are only about 310 fire departments that have received this accreditation in the nation, so this is really an exciting thing for our community. So what's next? We will continue to work on completing the strategies that are remaining, and of course, we'll be consulting with you on next steps, and I believe we will most likely complete the remaining steps this quarter of 2023. So we are going to start working on drafting an RFP that, of course, with your approval, to start looking for services to complete a new strategic plan for the next five years. As I wrap up, I do encourage everyone to check out the plan, as well as many of the implementation plan updates, at bcnv.org/strapplan, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Stand by. I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say we appreciate all the hard work from all of our staff members across all the departments in helping to achieve these goals in our strategic plan. Planning strategically is an essential part of what our city government should do on behalf of the citizens, and we acknowledge all of the work that's been done there. on behalf of the citizens, and we acknowledge all of the work that's been done there. And we really look forward to receiving some citizen input as we proceed in the steps that come and as well as, uh, you know, the expert, uh, input from a consultant that we may retain. And, um, I think that that's an important part of what we will continue to do going forward, looking to the changing world in which we live. So thank you, Mr. Tetter, for that, and thanks to all our staff and employees who've worked hard to help achieve this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walton.
Sure. I just also want to say thank you. I've been here just long enough to see some of these be ticked off, um, one by one. I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into this to make this possible. Five-year plan, um, starts out probably looking pretty daunting when there's all of them to be accomplished. And it's probably a really good feeling to be at the end of it and see that there's only a couple of goals left and know that we've been able to move forward with our goals. Um, definitely look forward to the next five-year process and to see what that has, um, in the future and look forward to the input like Councilman Walton said from our community too. Because I think that that's important to recognize some of their thoughts regarding that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, sure, uh, Booth, you're next. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you and staff. You've done a great job. I think just being able to complete these tasks in a timely manner is very important. And I think I'm really finding out what a great team we have here at Boulder City to complete all these tasks. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I, I completely agree. Our, our team is, is just, they work so well together and, and, um, we look forward to, uh, more strategies and priorities in a, in a new plan.
Thank you, Councilwoman Booth, and thank you, uh, City Manager. We just had a, um, a, a wonderful report from our pool pack representative, Alan from Fallon Cult, who, uh, went overboard on talking about how wonderful Boulder City is doing with its strategic, strategic plan and what it has done in the past. So our hats off to you and particularly all those citizens of Boulder City who have volunteered so many hours doing things and participating in helping, uh, move this city forward. It, uh, is a wonderful thing that we have recognition from well outside of our city about how well we're doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
While you're standing there, um, on, uh, or let, let's, uh, you can sit down then while we, in case it's a, a close vote. Uh, would someone like to move that we receive the presentation on the updated status?
Mayor, no actions required on the presentation.
Thank you very much. And then, City Manager, would you like to come back up with whoever you would like and, uh, address number eight?
Sure. Um, for item number eight, we have a presentation by the Utilities Director, and he'll be providing an overview of the draft Integrated Resources Plan for 2023 to 2027. And Joe Stupitz will be presenting this item.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the general public. I'm pleased to present to you this Integrated Resources Plan, presentation on behalf of the Utilities Department. I'd like to give kudos, thanks to our Utilities Analyst Josh Hardy for all his hard work in gathering data and preparing this presentation, and Utility Advisory Committee Chairman Carr for his peer reviewing efforts. Our city staff and council are dedicated to ensuring safe and reliable delivery of energy to our community in an environmentally safe and economically sound manner, and I greatly appreciate everyone's efforts. Okay, thank you. So I, I'm, again, I'm Joe Stupitz, your Utilities Director, and I'm responsible for ensuring that our community has the energy resources it needs to meet our demands. This presentation is a five-year look at our forecasted electric resources and demands. So what, what is an integrated resources plan and why do we need one? Integrated resource planning is critical for evaluating supply-side resources like power purchase agreements and demand-side resources like energy efficiency and other programs like net metering that reduce the need for additional power purchase agreements or purchasing energy out in the open market. We are also required to perform integrated resources planning as a customer of federal hydropower and submit this plan to Western Area Power Administration. So many of you know Boulder City is unique. The city owns and operates its own electrical distribution system. We are unlike our investor-owned utility neighbors in that we are not-for-profit. And the electrical distribution system is subject to the jurisdiction of the Boulder City Council rather than the Public Utilities Commission of Nevada. The city currently does not own or operate any generation resources and obtains all its energy needs from existing power purchase agreements and the o- open energy market. He- here is a yearly snapshot of our, uh, power demands from fiscal year 2021. The fiscal year starts on July 1, and, and you could see from this graph, the dark blue line, uh, that, that, that this is near the yearly peak demand for power. This is due to seasonal air conditioning demands in our climate. Our power demands fall as seasonal air conditioning demands decrease. Peak demand is nearly three times the average for residential customers and two times the average for commercial customers. This slide is, uh, illustrates a, a pie chart of the three types of customers by category. From the charts here, we could see that the residential customers make up about 87% of the total accounts, but account for about two-thirds of the energy demands. Commercial customers make up 11%, but account for about one-third of the energy demands. And city accounts for 2% of the accounts and about 3% of the energy demands. Boulder City has the lowest electric rates in the surrounding area. Boulder City's electric utility rates are 21% lower than the next highest of Mesquite, Nevada, on average, and 43% lower on average than Envy Energy. Boulder City also has the lowest residential service charge among its neighbors. This slide is a representation of our current customers by rate class. Um, from, from this slide, we could see that the majority of customers we have are residential. Boulder City provides low-income energy assistance to homes that qualify. The city provided 95% of the low-income energy assistance from nonprofit utilities in fiscal year 21, but only accounted for 6% of the total nonprofit utility sales in FY21. Boulder City is also planning to expand its rebates to qualified low-income energy assistance households under advisement from the Utility Advisory Committee. This slide shows all the supply-side resources with the newest addition going into effect January 1 of this year with Townsite Solar. The Townsite Solar Agreement provides five megawatts of firm power at a fixed cost for all of the year except for March, April, and off-peak in November. This is a 30-year agreement. The Hoover Agreement is a 50-year agreement that was renewed in 2017. The Salt Lake City Area Integrated Projects, or SLIP, Agreement includes Glen Canyon Dam and several other federal hydro facilities upstream. All of our energy needs outside of existing power purchase agreements are met by market energy under administration of the Silver State Energy Association, SSEA, of which Boulder City is a member. It's important to note on this slide in particular that the hydropower capacities here are nameplate capacities, and actual capacities are over 50% less than what is shown here due to the ongoing drought. This is a flow chart of wholesale power activities. Hoover B and SLIP agreements are managed by the Colorado River Commission, or the CRC, and Silver State Energy Association manages all power and energy purchases. And WAPA handles our short-term and balancing authority services. Here we show a mix of our energy purchased from our federal hydropower per- power purchase agreements, as well as market power purchases from the period of 2017 to 2021. During this time, our energy needs were primarily surfaced from hydropower, ranging from 66% to 58% of our entire energy demands during this period. Boulder City relies on market energy purchases in addition to our existing power purchase agreements. Demands are seasonal in nature, with June through September accounting for most forecasted purchases. On-peak is defined by all hours ending 0700 to 2200 from Monday to Saturday, Pacific prevailing time excluding North American Electric Reliability Corporation, or NERC, holidays. Off-peak means all hours ending 2300 to 0600 Pacific prevailing time, plus all hours of Sundays and NERC-defined holidays. It is important to note that in the coming years, off-peak resources will begin to become more expensive than on-peak, likely due to the increase of intermittent renewable resources like solar and wind onto the grid. Demand for solar net metering continues to increase, tripling the number of annual net metering customers from 2017 to 2021. The Utilities Department is neutral towards solar net metering and has limited future and current net metering to 80% of annual energy demands of a single household with current service connection fees. Where service connection fees to adjust the current capacity limits could also be adjusted and will be evaluated in the upcoming rate study. Here is our current tiered rate structure for Boulder City customers. With 91% of residential customers within the first tier, subdividing the first tier could provide additional savings and incentivize conservation activities. This slide indicates a typical energy consumption for a year for a 1,500-square-foot residence. This would be 19,710 kilowatt-hours for the year at an average cost of 9.83 cents per kilowatt-hour. Here is a graphical representation of the total disbursements from our energy efficiency rebate program. Upcoming proposed changes to energy efficiency rebates include energy-efficient thermostats as well as higher SEER ratings on HVACs. Population estimates over the next five years are flat, with peak demand and energy consumption estimating to increase 0.8% annually over a five-year period. This slide illustrates the load forecast assumptions based on future residential and commercial demands. The load forecast indicates flat to modest increases in energy consumption over the next five years. Here we illustrate our current supply-side resources forecasted into the future by power purchase agreement, with the most recent addition being Townsite Solar. An important note on this slide is that federal hydropower energy has declined by 19% since 2018 due to lowering lake levels at Powell and Mead. However, with the addition of the Townsite Solar Agreement, our market purchases have reduced from 42% in 2017 to 24% in 2022. Market energy purchases are projected to climb from 24% to 28% in 2026 based on increased energy demands and continued lowering of Lake Powell and Lake Mead. And we will look to become a Parker Davis customer, if possible, when their contract opens up in 2028. The city recently added to its electric fleet with the addition of two Tesla Model Ys, two Tesla Model 3s, and a Ford Mustang Mach-E SUV. The electric vehicle fleet for the city is estimated to save over 8,500 gallons of fuel annually. The conversion of the city's distribution voltage from 4,160 volts to 12.47 KV will increase system reliability and efficiency. The dual-rated transformer replacements are 95% completed and will allow Substations 1 and 2 to be decommissioned by 2026. The action plan for the city includes funding and expansion of the Energy Efficiency Appliance Program through 2020, 20, excuse me, 2023, and annual evaluation of peak demand and energy savings. And that concludes my presentation and would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions, comments, or observations? Councilwoman Booth?
Are we giving a credit for people to get appliances that are, um, use less electricity?
We do offer, uh, rebates, uh, namely for, uh, uh, SEER ratings on HVAC units. And so we're, we're looking to expand that program, modify the, uh, the SEER ratings to current industry standards, and that will be presented to you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Stupitz.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your report. And that's another one I don't have to take a vote, having accepted it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And they'll move, and they'll move on to, uh, number nine, introduction of bill number 1929, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City to amend Title 11 of the City Code, Section 11 dash 20 dash 4B regarding fence heights in the G Government and ER Emergency Resource Zones. This is not for discussion this meeting, but the discussion will happen next meeting. So we need a, uh, motion to introduce. Madam City Clerk, if you would read the bill then, title?
Did somebody make, did somebody introduce it?
I'll introduce, uh, Bill, uh, 1929.
And is there a second?
I don't need a second, it's just an introduction.
And by title only, waive the reading.
By to- title only.
An ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title 11 of the City Code, Section 11 dash 20 dash 4 point B regarding fence heights in the G Government and ER Energy Resources Zones, AM 22 dash 361. The consideration of this bill will be taken at the regular meeting on January 24th, 2023.
And is there? Do I have to appreciate the introduction?
No, you can just move on to the next item if you like.
I'm moving on. Thank you. We'll move on to item 10 for possible action, and I'll turn, uh, over to the City Manager on that one.
Thank you. Uh, this item is for possible action, Resolution Number 7564, a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City, Nevada, approving the Boulder City Electric Utility Five-Year Integrated Resources Plan for 2023 through 2027. And Mr. Joe Stupitz, our Utilities Director, will also be handling this item.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Stupitz.
Hello, Ben. So as you can see from the presentation from before, uh, th- this is a requirement for submission to WAPA on a five-year basis. So this resolution would, um, would accept the submission and allow us to submit to WAPA. So if there's any other questions regarding the plan, I can answer them if there weren't any from before.
Any questions? No, then we would, uh, ask for approval of the IRP for submission to the Western Area Power Administration. Is there such a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 7564.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion passes. We will skip number 11 as it's been removed from the agenda and go to number 12 on our agenda. and go to number 12 on our agenda for possible action. Mr. City Manager.
Item number 12 for possible action, matters pertaining to the 2022 Flood Control Master Plan Update for the city of Boulder City. It's a two-part item. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2022 Flood Control Master Plan Update for the city of Boulder City. And Item B, Resolution Number 7565, a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City, Nevada, adopting the Clark County Flood Control District Master Plan Update, MPU, for the city of Boulder City as an amendment to the master plan as the most cost-effective, structural, and regulatory means for correcting existing problems of flooding within the area and dealing with the probable effects of future development. First, for this item, we'll have our Public Works Director, Jamie Carreri. He'll provide the staff report, and then you can proceed to the public hearing and then consider the resolution. Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Hardy and council members. The matter before you tonight pertains to the 2022 Flood Control Master Plan Update, commonly referred to as the MPU. The purpose of the MPU is to add new information, assess progress, and make any recommended changes. The action before you tonight requires you to conduct a public hearing and consider approving the resolution to adopt the Clark County Flood Control District Master Plan Update. Every five years, the Nevada Revised Statute, NRS 43.596, requires a master plan update and an assessment of the progress towards fulfillment of the plan. The city's last plan update was presented in 2018. The 2022 MPU was presented to Boulder City Council at the November 11, 2022, meeting by the Flood Control District staff. Following our council's recommendation, the 2022 master plan update has been approved by the Regional Flood Control Committee, District Board, on December 8, 2022. The study updated the master plan hydrology for Boulder City and recently constructed flood control facilities were incorporated into the plan. A summary of the changes and amendments were included in the executive summary and provided as backup to the agenda item. You can find the recommendations on pages 5 through 11 of the presentation. I'm happy to do my best and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions? No questions, and we probably should open a public hearing. Any that would like to come forward for the public hearing on the 2022 Flood Control Master Plan Update? Nothing sent in on written notice?
No written comments were received.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing, seeing nobody coming forward. And if you would like to address Resolution Number 7565, Part B.
I move to pass Resolution Number 7565.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, Resolution Number 7565. Is any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion has passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move to item number 13, Resolution Number 7566, awarding the, or the request for proposal for development of solar power generation energy storage facilities. Mr. City Manager.
Yes. Our real estate contracts manager, Brock Armentraut, will be handling this item for the Finance Department.
Thank you. Mr. Armentraut?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Resolution 7566 to award RFP Number 2022-04 for property at 590 Eldred Valley Drive. Back on August 17, the city issued the RFP, soliciting proposals from interested parties for a solar generation and energy storage facility on approximately 38.56 acres. It was posted to the Nevada Electronic Government Marketplace and was viewed by over 3,800 companies who were invited to bid. Upon closing of the bid on October 20 of 2022, we received five proposals. City established a bid review committee that consisted of myself and several other senior-level staff members from throughout the city. The proposals were reviewed and scored for recommendation to City Council. And as a result, the committee is recommending that Boulevard Associates LLC be the founder, is the most responsive respondent, and that the RFP be awarded to them and that staff be directed to enter into contract negotiations for an ultimate lease of the property.
Thank you. Any questions, observations, or comments? I would accept a motion to approve Resolution 7566 for the request for proposal for development of solar power generation energy storage facilities.
I move to approve Resolution 7566.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion has passed. Thank you. We're moving to number 14, City Manager's Report Claims Paid Report. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Item number 14 is the City Manager's Report for Claims Paid during the month of November of 2022. And item number 15 is the City Manager's Report of the Financial Report, which is unaudited, and that's for the period ending November 30 of 2022. There is nothing to note or out of the ordinary on both of these reports. However, I do want to turn your attention to page 667 of your packet. In the financial report, this is our ARPA progress, the American Rescue Plan. We've had a lot of public outreach that was conducted during the phase of adopting the spend plan, but I've recognized that we have, we've made some progress, and you can see that there, or you can also visit bcnv.org/ARPA. And this page specifically is posted every month on the webpage as well. I'm here for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I just have one.
Councilwoman Booth?
Could you just share where they could find that on the webpage?
Sure. So you would go to bcnv.org/ARPA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And... Do I need to say we accept his report?
No, that's not necessary.
I'm going to accept it anyway.
Perfect.
Thank you. And we're moving to item 15, City Manager's Financial Report.
Mr. Mayor, I covered both items.
You're so good.
And you can move on to public comment.
Okay. Having said that, with permission from the City Manager, I'm moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment that would like to have each person take up to five minutes and be able to have comment on any item? State your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roseanne Rabiot O'Millie. I think Tammy might be the only person here who's attended more city council meetings than I have. But I don't know, Tammy. I think I might have, I might have a few more. Anyway, what I was thinking about this week, there was an item on a social media site. I'm only on like about seven social media sites every day. This social media site is called, what do they call it, Nextdoor? Okay, so you can like pick if you're in Old Town, if you're over here in the girl streets, whatever. So these people are talking about, what do you do if you're retired in Boulder City? And I've, I've been retired, are you ready for this, 12 years? I can't believe it's been 12 years. Now, I'm, I do more things now than I did. And I was putting in 10 and 12 and 15-hour days when I worked for the city. But I put in more time now. I do what I want, when I want. And it occurred to me that there's so many things that have changed with the website. I've seen the city's website go through a time where I put it together with all the department heads. This was, I don't even remember the year. And where people don't know where to find things. And I know the city manager does his little Tedder talks. That's kind of cute. And it actually, I didn't know about the Tedder talks until it was like six months later. And I didn't know. And I'm all over social media, okay? Bill Ferens told me a long time ago that I was, as Public Information Officer, I should have gone to every house in Boulder City to talk to everybody and tell them what was going on in the city. That's really difficult to do. I would, I would have loved to have done that, but it's impossible. In today's, with all the social media, with all this other stuff, I think we can always come up with, like the Tedder talks, I saw the new Public Works Director. I think it's, I want people to be, to know what's going on. If I'm missing something, and I got my nose in everything, if I'm missing something, I think there have to be ways that we can help each other. I'm not putting this on any one person, okay? This is not a one-person deal. This is a collaborative deal where city council member Jorgensen, or Walton, or Booth, or Mayor Hardy, where, and I know you guys got a lot of stuff to do, but take some time, get together, say, once a month or whatever, call people together over at the bookstore, at a brew pub, coffee cup, here, there, even here. And people don't know what they don't know. They don't know what was in the flood control plan. They don't know what was in all the information that had to go to WAPA. They don't even know what WAPA means. And I was very pleased that Mayor Hardy said, "Western Area Power Administration." I heard it with my failing ears. That's what I mean. People don't know what they don't know. We got to give them the opportunity to do it. That's it.
Thank you. Come forward, please.
Good evening, Boulder City Mayor and City Council citizens. I am laybrother Steven Gerard Zetlowski. I'm very delighted to be back in the Silver State, Nevada, area. I think I was here in the last seven, eight years, and I spoke at that time on the topic of life peace zones. You've received a Bible bookmark to remind you on that topic that I spoke of then. I've amplified my approach, and that's why I'm here today. Let me get to my thoughts. I've learned that your staff has been very accommodating. I've called on the phone already, so I'm getting the demographical information for Boulder City, learning that it has about 15,000 citizens for its population. For those of you who would like to know my background, I have an undergrad degree at Purdue University in electrical engineering. I can understand the utility side of things very well. I have a master's degree at Xavier University. During that time, I was part of Students for Life, and I kind of continue that flair today. I've been a sidewalk counselor in Cincinnati. I helped to establish 40 Days for Life, and I have groomed myself in what I call table talks. I love to get people together and let's have a table talk on these new possibilities, even in pro-life and personhood. Because the U.S. Supreme Court made its Dobbs decision this, the last year, all cities in the country, about 18,000 cities and about 3,000 counties, now have new traction with pro-life. I believe I'm now one of the top five speakers in the nation. So every city I go to, I hope you'll listen with hearts and know that we now have these new possibilities. Why I'm excited to be here at Boulder City is you, I'm told, have a city charter. Cities with charters have special advantages and leverage versus other cities, whether they be general or statutory cities. So I'm here to encourage you to contact me if that's in your heart to do so, and let's move the city in the new direction of preserving itself. I believe you are already a pro-life city. It's time to work together and establish and write a personhood resolution. That would be part of your marketing effort, which would go on social media, which would be very good. I can tell you that I've loved to work with churches. And beloved mayor, you might consider even establishing an interfaith council. I've already been told by one of your citizens, maybe there's only about nine churches in your community, but having an interfaith council will be an important part of the integrity and the cohesiveness of moving forward with personhood. I'm told you have city events like Art in the Park, your Danbury Parade, and your National Night Out. Now, whether you decide to do workshops, whatever your approach might be with this, you should also be delighted to know that I have knocked door-to-door houses because I'm also a scholarly petitioner. If you look at the football field that was built for the Raiders, I was one of the petitioners to help groom that possibility years ago. So I'm also a scholar in the art of petitioning. And the favorite line that I use when getting things on the ballot is, "Let's get this on the ballot. The citizens have the constitutional right to vote on it." And guess what? The citizens have the constitutional right to vote on personhood. I don't know how much time I have left, but just to show you my great love for the sanctity of life, if you go to the back of your Bible bookmark, if you received it, there's a beautiful song. I'm just going to chant it for you because this woman who's near and dear to my life wrote this song. It's called "Let the Beating Heart." Let the beating heart, let the beating heart show you there is life in the womb. You have my information here. I hope you'll email me. I expect I'll be in the greater Nevada-California area, at least for another 30 days minimum. So you might want to jump on board, and we might want to have a table talk or two, and let's get that personhood resolution passed even this year. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Sir, can you write your name down, sign the proper spelling, please?
Oh, yes, sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to talk to us in public comment?
Do you need a phone number or email? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Nathan Murdock. I'm with Rev Renewables. I'd like to ask a, maybe a question. We submitted a request to have item number 13 maybe removed from the agenda tonight. Mr. Sweetin here made some comments at the beginning of the meeting about item 13 to potentially reconsider or further consider the RFP results that came in. potentially reconsider or further consider the RFP results that came in. I wanted to just offer myself for any questions and ask for reconsideration on Item Number 13, that it be held off on until further questions can be resolved and, you know, for the benefit of the city and the respondents as well. So I thought I'd open that up and offer myself for any questions you might have about Item 13 and why we're asking for this reconsideration.
I appreciate your request. However, in public comment, we don't interact. It's not on the agenda as such. And so I welcome you to reengage in any way you would like legally, but we are not able to have public comment interaction.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one willing to come with public comment? Seeing none. With your permission, I'll adjourn the meeting.
All right. I have one final public comment to read. This was submitted by Andre Haynes. This public comment is provided by Andre Haynes, founder and CEO of the Armed Forces Chamber of Commerce. Everyone is invited to an Armed Forces Chamber Business Mixer in partnership with the Las Vegas Clark County Library District on Wednesday, January 18 at the Boulder City Library. Armed Forces Chamber Business Mixers in partnership with the Las Vegas Clark County Library District include a special presentation swearing in of new members, updates, contests, plus prizes, and much more. Armed Forces Chamber Business Mixers partnership with the Las Vegas Clark County Library District feature an hour of networking starting at 3:00 PM and brief programs starting at 4:00 PM. Armed Forces Chamber Business Mixers in partnership with the Las Vegas Clark County Library District are open to the public and admission is free. For details, visit armedforceschamber.com.
Thank you. And my mayor pro tem has been very effective at making sure I stay on task, and I will ask now for, that's her additional duty, by the way. I will ask for City Council people to have their reports at this time.
If we're starting to your right, then I'd be happy to go. The only thing I have to report on, Mr. Mayor, is our involvement with the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. They are very aware of Boulder City as a participant, and we're grateful for that. We heard a report today that the greater Las Vegas area is, through the airport numbers, now exceeding 2019 numbers. So they're saying not only are we in recovery, but we're in growth again. So Las Vegas, through its efforts for marketing and tourism, is rising the tide, so to speak. And all of us communities benefit from the dollars that come in there. And recently, we had CES that concluded this, this week, this past week, about 115,000 visitors and New Year's Eve, about 400,000. So that's about a half million people in the last two weeks here visiting Las Vegas, again, bringing their dollars to gladly leave some of that for us. And that's all I have to report on, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have something.
Go for it.
I don't know if anybody's been to the Senior Center lately, but I wanted to put a big thank you to them. They do a great job at feeding the seniors. And I also wanted to thank PDQ Printing for our grocery store there. They did some nice signage for us. So for the grocery store, it looks really nice. And also Jody Tyson Low from Three Square, who used to be a resident of Boulder City, who got a refrigerator for us over at the Senior Center so that the seniors can have cheese, milk, and eggs for the weekend. And so that was a great added plus for Boulder City to be able to supply those items for the seniors that can use them. And then anyone that's over 62, if you know somebody that needs some groceries or help with groceries, that they can go to the Senior Center, and there is help over there for those. So the Senior Center does a wonderful job for our seniors, and I just want to say thank you to all those people that make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you to you and to them. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I was able to attend my first debt management meeting. It was mostly housekeeping, so bringing in the new members. They'll do more official business at the next meeting. So, and also thank you for my additional responsibilities as mayor pro tem and being able to help this move along. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jorgensen. I would suggest if you wanted to have a really big show, you go to the city, state of the city, and if you can't make it, that's okay. I will have the opportunity to say a lot of good things about Boulder City that you probably already know, and I'm looking forward to being able to have that report. That will be on the 19th at what I call the tent at the golf course at 6 o'clock. Is some of that right, Madam City Clerk?
5 o'clock, social hour. 6 o'clock is the address. And everyone is welcome.
And I would accept a motion to adjourn? I will just do it with your permission. Adjourn.